Dave Welling, I'm speaker. So we'll turn that over to Ms. Harris to tell us if we have a... Oh, no. Let's do this in order. I'll call the meeting to order and then let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One hundred and fifty. If there's a reason for all...
All right. Now we'll turn it over to Ms. Harris for a roll call.
Four are present in person and two by phone. So we do have a four.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we need someone to approve the agenda, but we need to remove ordinance 2408. And Mr. Harris has that explanation if we need it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 2408 was an ordinance proposing to amend the peddled larceny section of the Evanston Code to increase the value limit for misdemeanor peddled larceny offenses from $500 to $1,000 to match state statutes. When I started looking at this issue, it was before June 14th, and I looked online and got the online copy of their code provisions. That date, June 14th, is the last date that our online code was updated with ordinances passed within the last year. I had forgotten, and unbeknownst to me at that time until I saw it, that we had already amended section 1537 early, early last year in '23. So it's a duplicate ordinance and we don't need it.
Well, thank you. So we need to approve the agenda with that removal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. All right, we need to acknowledge the city council minutes from October 1st and the city council work sessions from October 8th. Is there anybody that has a problem with those? If not, we'll go on to the bills. Anybody have any questions on the bills? If not, we'll need a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed. All righty. Council comments. Mr. Lynch.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Perks doesn't have anything either. How about Mr. Sellers?
You know, we've had a lot of stuff happen in our community the last little while, and my sincere condolences to public works. It's hard to lose somebody that's, that is like family you've worked with, and sometimes we spend more time with our coworkers than we do our own spouses. We've had other deaths recently in our community. People that I've known for a long time have died, deaths that they shouldn't have died. So I just ask, as I have for the last eight years, be mindful of those around you. Watch for people who are showing signs of not doing well. Put out a listening ear. See if you can make a difference in somebody's life. That's all I have.
Thanks.
Kim.
Welcome, everyone. It's good to see the faces. We're getting ready for cold, that's one thing. And kind of echoing Mike's thoughts, you know, I always speak about our veterans and 22 a day is way too many and as we go into winter. And also, be mindful that with all the activity going on in the world that's coming across our news feeds, that can be triggering for our vets. So keep an eye out and extend the hand and go check because the inner turmoil of our veterans is there are no words and we owe them everything so we can walk across and shake a hand and check on them. That's all I have.
Thanks. Hey, don't mention that cold yet. We still like 70-some degrees.
It's snowing tomorrow, Jeff.
Don't say that.
My horse has studs that can go in his... I guess you can't do that with golf balls, huh?
No, I'm just enjoying the weather while I can because I know it's coming.
You could come up with a heated driver.
All right.
I've got cover on my car, but I don't get through the snow.
Do we need to bring this off from being tabled first or do we... So we'll need a motion to...
Need a motion.
Yeah, we'll need a motion to remove it from the table.
I'll make that motion to remove from the table.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. All right, we've removed that from the table. So now we can have the public hearing and you'll take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. The purpose of the hearing is for the city council to receive evidence regarding the issuance of a microbrewery permit for Shades of Pale Inc., DBA Shades Brewing. The applicant for the license has been reviewed, the application, excuse me, has been reviewed by the city clerk's office and the State Liquor Commission of Wyoming. The application is completed this time, subject to fulfilling requirements by the State Liquor Commission. The application requires, which includes, excuse me, requiring an amended lease be entered into between the city of Evanston and the applicant that lists the street address of the proposed permit use and that the lessee is specifically authorized to sell alcohol and malt beverages on the property. The permit cannot be issued until the lease is so amended. However, the notice of application set a public hearing originally for October 1, 2024, which was tabled until October 15, 2024. The hearing can now proceed as scheduled and the action item, the motion to issue the permit, will follow the public hearing. Notice of the application has been published in a newspaper of local circulation once a week for two consecutive weeks. Anyone who wishes to present information to the council should approach the podium, state your name and mailing address, and present any comments to the council. No one will be cross-examined, but all those who approach the podium may be asked questions by members of the council. The issues in this hearing are set forth in section 4-9 of the Evanston City Code. Mr. O'Neil, do you wish to provide any background information for the council at this time?
Sure. Members of the council, thank you. A little bit of background. We got feedback from the Liquor Commission that we needed to add specific language in this lease, the specific language, adding in a commencement date. We've added that language in and we have a restated lease to be signed after this meeting, if so approved by you. We added in the address 1512 Main Street for section four of the Roundhouse and provided them the ability to sell alcohol on the lease as well. So that's basically the purpose of that restated lease and, and other than that, I don't know if I have any other information.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding the license application? Can you tell us who you are and what your address is, please?
Trent Farger, partner and owner of Shades Brewing Company, 435 Aspen Drive in Park City, Utah, 84098.
Go ahead, please, sir.
We're super excited to be here and appreciate the support we've gotten from Evanston at this point and as part of the construction project. We're really interested in getting up here. We wanted to be up here over a year ago. Unfortunately, due to construction delays, it's taken a little bit longer, but it looks like the building is turning out as, as expected, if not better. It really looks neat and, and I know a lot of work has been put into it by a lot of people. So I appreciate the support. If you have any questions about anything on this, just please let me know.
Any questions?
We're excited to see you in here, too. Sorry it's taken so long.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, when?
It's a good question. According to our project schedule, it looks like the building, the gray shell, as we call it, for our purposes of doing our actual move and building of the bars and other things that we're responsible for, will happen 11:25. And then we'll take over and have our contractors come up and start doing the work on the inside. And then, once that's done, then we can start moving equipment. We're probably somewhere first quarter of '25 is my guess.
You said 11:25 for...
11:25 '24.
Okay.
The last week of November.
Gotcha.
Yeah, sorry. I should have been more clear.
And Trent, did, did Mr. O'Neil give you a copy of the restated lease?
He did. He gave me the restated language in that and we reviewed it and we're fine with it.
Any further questions?
We need to throw a big party when you're, when you're done. Big party.
Yeah, the whole town, hopefully.
Yeah, big party.
Thank you, Trent.
Thank you.
Anyone else present who wishes to speak concerning this application? There be no further testimony, the hearing on this matter will be closed. Mr. President, the council can now consider the motion to issue the permit.
Okay, do we have anybody that wants to make that motion?
We've got a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed. All right.
I think there was two ayes out of that.
I think there was.
Yeah, I second that.
Aye.
All right. Let's go on to the consent agenda. These are kind of go hand in hand. You want to do them separately or together?
Let's do them together.
Yes, do them together.
Together? All right, is there anybody here that wants to talk about them? Okay, nobody's here, so let's do both these together. What do we do? Ask for motion on those also?
Yes, Mr. President, that's correct. Just a motion on the consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed. Sorry, I forget you two were sitting next to me.
That's okay, you're doing good.
All right, we have no unfinished business today. Let's go on to the new business. Resolution 2465, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Resolution 2465 is a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing and pledging support for Wyoming Horse Racing's application for master plan amendment before the Wyoming Gaming Commission relating to its facility in Evanston, Wyoming. Mr. Council President, this is what we talked about on the first. This is a resolution authorizing letter of support. Council has before it the proposed letter of support. I'll also note Mr. Legoria is here if you have any questions for him.
I think we went over...
I'll introduce what the motion took.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Does anybody want to discuss this?
I think we went over pretty well everything last time.
I think so.
We're excited.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very big aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. All right, resolution 2466, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 2466 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing acceptance of a proposal and execution of a memorandum of agreement with Condry and Associates, Inc. to review the city of Evanston employee compensation plan.
Ms. Harris.
Good evening, President Perks and council members. This study, we feel like is something that needs to be done. The last time we had it, it was October of 2018, which is six years ago. They recommend two to four years, two, four years at the most. So we're already two years behind doing one. So what it is, is it's an analysis of the employee compensation data that helps the city assess our compensation plan. Since we've had a study with Condry and Associates before, this one will just be an update. They have all our job descriptions and all of that stuff, so this is just going to be an update. They, last time in 2018, they all came in person. This time they'll just do it via Zoom, and so it's much cheaper this time because they're not coming here, they're not traveling here. They know our city pretty well. We call them and ask them questions all the time about different things, so. We currently, in our market, are dealing with labor shortages. We, we just simply don't get applications, especially in law enforcement and our water division. We used to get folders that thick of applications and we have a water position open now and I bet you there's four. So hopefully we can change something that will entice people to apply. We need to ensure that we are paying employees, employees fairly and competitively and that we can attract and retain skilled workers. High turnover is costly to an organization. So we need to take care of our employees. They're the foundation of the city. Any questions about the study?
I'm just wondering, because when we did the big study, I figured we would just be readdressing this every couple of years. And I think, and I don't know how we would do it, but somehow if we can make almost a little more automatic that like every two years that we're just routinely doing it, I don't know how we would do that or how, what the proper, proper procedure would be to do that. But I think, I don't like, having been in management a lot of my career, I do not like playing catch-up, playing catch-up, playing catch-up. I think it does your employees a disservice. I think it does the organization that they're working for a disservice, in this case the city. So my, my more, would be more of a, instead of a question, maybe a comment, that I think we need to come up with a way that we're routinely looking at this more often instead of, to the point that we're going from applications like this down to nothing, that we need to be able to maybe have those gains and wanes like a little bit less. So that would be, that would be my only comment is that instead of waiting six years, that we're more doing it more of an automatic. And I, I, when you say two to four, I think with the changing economy and everything that we have, I think two years is much more appropriate.
Okay.
When they do that analysis, do they, I mean, they talk about where our wages should be? Because I wasn't here when they did the last one.
Right.
They talk about where our wages should be, right? As far as each department, each employee?
Yes.
Do they set up any kind of scale for time of service?
Yes, they, so that, that, all of that information is taken into consideration. They take each individual job and, you know, at this time, they'll do, they'll look at the job description that already exists, and then they'll interview the department heads to make sure that that's actually what the job entails. And then they, last time, what they did with longevity is you would get bumped up in the scale for like however many years you were here. So people that had been here a long, long time, and there's quite a few of them, they moved up the scale pretty quickly. And they take each individual job and analyze it and they have a lot of factors that, like if you, if you work outside, if you, if you supervise people, then you move up on the scale. It's very interesting.
Do they have anything that's kind of set in automatic, like, hey, you're going to get this bump and a raise each year automatically? Or is it just kind of...
Um, no, they real, they don't really dictate that. That's, that's kind of done through our departments.
Okay.
For like merit increases and things like that.
Yeah, do they give you any kind of reference, say, hey, cities of this town usually do this or...
Yes. So they usually have about 20 cities that they, they send a, what's the word I'm trying to, a form to, and they, they tell them that they're doing a salary study for us. I just filled one out for Lyman with his very same company. And then they, they ask them their wages and benefits and all those kind of things. They turned it back into Condry and they look around the area, like we really want them to look at Park City, Summit County, and Utah for our police officers because they're taking a lot of our officers. They don't have to live down there to work down there and they're paying them very well. So that's where a lot of them are going. So yeah, they take, they take different towns, similar in size to us, around our area, and they compare what they're paying and, and what we pay.
Do they take any consideration in demographics at all? Like, so like when you talk about us versus Summit County, our demographics are vastly different?
Different. We, we don't know. Mike and I are going to talk to them about that. Because they're so close to us that they're, I mean, that, that's an issue with our police department.
Oh, I know it is. I was just curious. Sorry, this might be oddball questions, but...
No, they're good, especially since you haven't been through it. If you have any questions as we're doing it, because it's a four-month process, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I definitely think it needs to get done. I just, I want to make sure it's done right, too.
Yeah, for sure. We want it to be done right, too.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yeah, I think it needs to be done also. We went through a period of time with inflation, it just went rampant, so. I know six years ago, there were some really huge adjustments that were made. And so this time it'll be real interesting to see with inflation, what kind of adjustments will be made, but...
Last time, our wages were all over the board. Like they're, because we hadn't had one. I don't know if we'd ever have one, had one, but it, it wasn't making sense at all. It was hard to, to figure out where somebody should come in and actually start a position and people were being paid...
Well, when you start out, police officers and they're on food stamps, there's a problem.
Yep.
That's where we were six...
That's exactly right.
So.
That's right.
It might have been six years, but you might be thankful that we waited because inflation is probably going to hit those numbers even harder now.
I think so, too.
Okay. Nobody else? All right. Do we have a motion? Did we have a motion?
You needed introduction and a motion to pass.
Okay, so we just need to vote on it?
No.
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
Okay, we got it. And you'll second it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed. Okay. Try to keep up with this now. All right, resolution 2467, Mr. Harris.
Mr. President, the resolution of, resolution 2467 is a resolution of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, ratifying the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln, Uinta, and Sweetwater Counties of Wyoming and cities and towns located therein regarding impact assistance funds associated with construction of the proposed Dry Creek Trona Project located near Green River, Sweetwater County, Wyoming.
Council President Perks, members of the council, Rock O'Neil, Community Development Department. We went through this process before with Project West, another major industrial project. Went through the industrial siding process. This is Dry Creek. It's about twice the size of, of Project West, the, the project we, we just went through. $5.2 billion estimated project costs. It's estimated that over the duration of the project, 49 months, about 1,400 construction workers. And Evanston will likely see between 374 and 478 of those, of those workers, and, and we've estimated our impact at 2.9 million. As part of the process, we had to negotiate that number down to get to that impact assistance target percentage. Obviously, Sweetwater County gets the greatest portion of that because the projects in Sweetwater County, Uinta County basically got cut by two-thirds and, and Evanston ended up requesting and agreeing upon 836,000 in, in impact assistance funds.
Sounds better than nothing.
Any questions?
This is the one near closer to McKinnon, right?
Yeah, this will be just east of Granger.
Yeah, this is the Granger one.
South, it's a south...
Southwest.
West of Green River in the description and the, it's, it's two, it's two component parts. They have like a line and then a processing center. The processing center is just eight miles west of Green River.
Got you. Okay. Because the other one, the other one was near, yeah, it's near McKinnon, right? The other one was near Granger.
Yes.
Is that right?
The other one's closer to Granger and, and actually, that one is closer, I think, than this one will be.
Okay.
Somewhere up there in the middle of Sweetwater County.
And then the next one that's coming for us to, to look at will be the Natrium Plant.
Lot of stuff going on.
So, quick question. Those numbers didn't change from the ones you gave us last meeting?
That's correct.
They're the same as...
President, Councilmember Sellers, that's correct.
I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed. All right, that passed. All right, let's go to 2468, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Council President, resolution 2468 is a resolution of the governing body of the city of Evanston, Wyoming, authorizing the execution of a restated real estate lease and memorandum of lease with Shades of Pale Inc., Utah Corporation. Mr. Council President, this is the restated lease that you have a copy of that is in tandem with the microbrewery permit application. The changes are that there was a street address requirement from the Wyoming Liquor Division. That's been inserted in the lease and we tried to give everyone a redline copy so you could see what that changed. There's a commencement date stated in the lease and pursuant to the requirement of the liquor division, the lease contains language on page four, section five, that the less or consents the lessee selling alcohol and malt beverage on the premises, which I'm still kind of flummoxed about because the whole purpose of the lease is so they can put a microbrewery in there.
It's required on every case.
But that's a requirement, Slim. But those are the only changes.
Okay.
Don't ever try and make sense of the Liquor Commission. I'll introduce with a motion to pass.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And all opposed. All right, that passed. And we skipped, or we did away with ordinance 2408, so comments and remarks from the department. Let's start with you, Scott. I think you're, you're in lieu of Kim. So you get to be first, so I don't forget about you. You're unforgettable, but you know. I don't want Kim mad at me. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
That's quite the title. So I'm Scott Ehlers. I work at the Purple Sage Golf Course now, and that's about it. And so what I put together here is, I read this editorial, it seems to be an editorial type year, and I read this editorial in the last edition. And I want you, as a council, to know that of the three, if you want to call it three-thirds, three different opinions, one is accurate and the rest aren't even close. And so I'm going to read this. It says, "The pickleball courts were constructed for a little under $500,000." Well, that's only off by $185,000. So obviously I don't have a lot of money because that's quite a bit of money to me. And that's not even accurate. And I, and I hate to see these things come out in the paper because then people automatically think they're wrong. And so that was off by 185,000. 185,000. I put this together, and I really do mean this. The city is not deaf or blind. You know, I think they do a nice job of helping the city out and making it a place to be. I firmly believe that. As the director, when I was the director for about four years, you know, I came to the city council for countless things. And it was quite an eye-opener for me the first time because I just wasn't used to asking for much money. And I asked for something, I thought, man, that's a lot of money. And in reality, it wasn't a lot of money. And so as as time went on, I asked for a little bit more, a little bit more in order to make the parks better and the golf course also, and the cemetery also. And so the city has always been behind recreation and the city of Evanston 100%. And y'all need to comment it on that because it's it's like being a judge. You're half wrong or half right. And I really do admire the job that goes on here. And so the reason I'm here tonight is I want you all to understand a few things that are going on, not only at the pickleball court, because I do take that a little bit personal, because that project was underneath my administration. And quite honestly, it was me. And so when I look at that statement that says, well, a little under 500,000, and it costs 315,000, I think that's sad, that that has to come out that way. Because when I drive by the pickleball courts and the basketball courts are there, wow, I'm wowed. It's always busy. There's church groups here. There's young kids there. There's, it's quite a hub. And it couldn't have turned out any better, quite honestly. And so I thank you all for that because you're the ones that put it together. And really, really, really a good thing. And so the next one I read in that article goes, "An annual $400,000 deficit for a budgeted 1 million yearly for the city-operated golf course." Now, I've listened for, you know, I've been at the golf course for like 40 years now. Right? 40 years. That's a long time. And so I've watched things come and go, and I've heard all the comments. And so what I've done is I've kind of bullet pointed things on here to talk about the golf course. And from 2014 to 2020, the golf course averages $420,000. And that was an average for all those years. Now, starting in 2020, COVID did help, but it goes a little bit deeper than COVID. There's a lot more to the game than that. And so the gross revenue as of today was $700,000. And so I looked at the numbers today, 700 grand. And we used to do 450. And so that $700,000 doesn't have a lease payment in it yet. So we're going to get up to roughly $720,000 by the end of December. Now, it doesn't take a lot of ingenuity there. That's like a 71% increase from 2000, before 2020. Now, I'd like to say that was all me because I was the director at the time when this all happened. But it's it's the big picture. You know, we've got a great superintendent. We've got y'all. We got golfers coming from the Wasatch Front. We've got a senior group coming from Bridger Valley. We've got people that have found out that Evanston, Wyoming is a great place to go because it has a great golf course and it's it's a nice little city. And so with this in mind, it's it's roughly accurate when I read that. But of that 1.1 million, which is our budget, $548,000 is is employees' salaries and benefits. And so I went over it with DJ today. So he's spending roughly $533,000 to maintain that 18-hole golf course? That's pretty sweet. Because it's one of the better golf courses ever. And and I, you know, people ask me, well, Scott, why don't you go play golf in Utah? And I said, well, what for? This is a pretty good place. I don't need to go anywhere. And so DJ's done a fantastic job. The Parks and Rec does a fantastic job. And y'all have really helped that out. That golf course, everybody needs to understand, it helps school programs. It helps the golf team. It helps the classics. We have a group that come over from Bridger Valley, which does suicide prevention. It hits so many different people. It hits Wyoming Golf Association. And that brings people from everywhere and stays here. We do a member guest. We do, I mean, on and on and on and on. And it just isn't good old Evanston playing golf. It's it's everywhere. Our Wasatch Front group has has climbed another percent. So we're at 10% now. Now, I will say that's good and bad because when Scott wants to go out golfing, he can't go. There's too many darn people out there right now, which is great for the economy. But, you know, that's the that's where we're at right now. And so, you know, I can't, I can't say enough about the golf course and the operation and the backing that it's had. Because it's 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 a tremendous place. And it's a tremendous place for people coming into Evanston because, I mean, you, you know, I know Rocco brings people out there. And you can market this place like there's no tomorrow. You got Bear Meadows, you got pickleball, you got the golf course, you got the rec room, you got City Hall. It's just, it's like never ending. So anyway, thank you for that. So that part of the article is is really pretty true. But, you know, I look at the salaries that are paid, and that money's just staying right here in Evanston. You know, we're buying houses and buying food. And and it's really, it's not going anywhere. And so that's, that's, that's a plus to me also. The last thing I'd like to say is that there's a statement here. This one is probably what fired me up the most. And I'm, you know, I'm getting a little old, so I don't need to fire up anymore. But this one got me going pretty good. It says, "I have not included near 3 million annually that Parks and Rec spends on maintaining a golf course grounds. This is the city's largest city park expenditure." I don't know where that came from. There's no $3 million spent on the golf course. There's only 1.1 million. And that 1.1 million I just went over, 548,000 goes to employees, and the rest goes into the golf course. So 3 million, I have no clue where that could even come from. In fact, I kind of got with DJ today, and I said, DJ, if you get $3 million to maintain this golf course, you're doing a poor job. I mean, we should have Augusta here right now. So where that came from is so inaccurate that it's it's sad. You know, it's hard for me to to read that article because then people across Evanston read it and think that's true. And that's, I have no clue where that came from. No clue. That's, you know, that's speaking out of turn, in my opinion. And and for the paper's behalf, I think it's sad that something goes into a paper that everybody reads, or not everybody, but people that get the paper read it. And they think, wow, we spent $3 million on a golf course? It's false. 100%. Not even close. And so I want you all to know that we are taking care of business out there. And we're doing a great job out there, you know. And I'm, we're not looking for accolades. We're not looking for anything. Just I wanted you to understand that that is so far off that, you know, maybe somebody can explain that. I don't know. If there's a way to explain something that's not true, then I guess I'm all ears. But I want to thank you all. If you want to look at that second sheet real fast, that that gives you the numbers. You know, and I I stood up here one time before and I said, even though the revenue changes, which can go with increases in fees and, you know, this and that, the thing I pay the closest attention to is number of rounds. And when I remember when Dennis Papinka turned to me, goes, you know, that back when he was still around, we were at 19,000 rounds back then, or something like that. He said, Scott, I need you at 25,000 rounds. I said, Dennis, that's, there's no way. That's not going to happen. And he was right. You know, we're at 33,000 rounds, you know, now. And, you know, that's to the end of September. And we'll be a few more. October's never a great month for rounds. But we will increase our rounds by the end of the year, by the end of this month, because it's supposed to get crappy here pretty soon. But, you know, that just shows me people are coming to Evanston and they are spending money. And so if you've got any questions, like I say, I don't know where that $3 million figure came from. Well, I do know where it came from. And I guess he can try to explain that one if he'd like to.
Is it fair to say that you take the 1.1 minus the 720, so we're at 380?
Yes.
Is all we spend on that golf course?
Yes.
We get that back in, we got that back probably in the state AM that showed up.
Yes.
Honestly, in economic growth, you know.
No question.
It turns seven times each dollar.
Yeah. I was going to bring that up, but it's hard to, it's hard to quantify that. And so that's always an arguing point. Well, you know, these people come and they spend money. I will say this, that with 10% of our golfers coming from Evanston, or excuse me, from the Wasatch Front, I guarantee they're not filling up their gas tank before they come up here. Because, hey, I went to Costco one day and thought, oh, this will be a lot cheaper. Wasn't cheaper. So I just used up what I had and filled up when I came home. So I guarantee it's really close, like really close. But it's hard to, I mean, hard to put a number to it.
Kudos on you because 380 is a lot better number we were looking at a couple of years ago, five years ago. Yeah. So that that gap between, you know, that gap's gotten smaller. And I'd love to say you're out there with a rake, but DJ needs a hell of a lot of credit for how good that place looks.
No question. And he would like to come talk to you while I'm speaking. A, because I talked to him today and I said, you know, DJ, it's hard for me to get up there and say, yeah, Utah's gassing up here and they're buying fireworks and they're buying Lotto tickets, which they do. And he wants to come and talk about what a golf course does for our air, you know, the fires that are around. It takes the carbon dioxide out of the air. And and he's way smarter than that than I am. But he would like to come talk one day about that.
He's welcome. I have a work session anytime.
Yeah, I did tell him that, so.
We can get him on there and.
I said, get her lined up.
While you're here.
Yes.
There is one thing I've always wondered about the golf course. You know, I'm, I've always got an eye on the golf course. The one thing I was never able to discern through all the budgets and and who's paying for the water?
It's in the city, it's in our budget.
So it's in the 1.1 million?
Yeah.
And that's getting done?
It's 80,000 or 90,000. It's somewhere in that neighborhood.
Because when I go through the 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 budgets and stuff, it's a little tricky to figure out where all that, who's paying for the water. And don't get me wrong. I know it can be, you know, hard to hear something about something you love. But, you know, when we're talking about the golf course, we're not talking about just the course. We're talking about 1.1 million dollars of taxpayers' money.
Right.
And there is only a small percentage of Evanstonians that use that. They, most of them do not know that they are paying thousands of dollars every year for golf club, golf balls. They would choke knowing that. They don't, the people who can barely feed their themselves, they have a hard time with this. So I understand and I appreciate all the hard work you've done. But there is also an accountability and a responsibility from all of us that sit here to manage the other percentage for the people that are that are paying for it and not using it. Don't get me wrong with that. There is an absolute accountability for every doll, and it's not just this. But there's no other sport that gets 1.1 million dollars a year from taxpayer money. There's not. And I think it's great. And I think it brings in, but anytime anything runs in a deficit, again, it's the taxpayers. And since most of them aren't using it, so they're not recovering that ROI, so to, you know, so to speak. You did a magnificent job. Don't get me wrong. But anytime I see things like cross-country ski rental, 000000, I'm thinking opportunity to close the gap and include more people.
It's at the rec center.
So it's still zero. And we don't, you know, and we can do, we can do more. So I find that with the golf course, it is a great responsibility to return that money that is spent to the other people that aren't using it, if in all possible.
And and I totally, I agree with you. I do agree with you. But on the other side, and there's always, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's always the two things going on, the two conversations, is that we we generated $720,000 that came right back into the city coffer, right back into it. And so that did leave that that amount left. But the, what, kind of like what Jesse was trying to say is that I can't stand here and say, well, yeah, we got that $300,000 back. But I, I wish there were a way to quantify that by the amount of people that come into this town and spend extra money on gas and Lotto and Wyoming whiskey and, I mean, on and on and on and on and on. I wish there was a way. But I, there is no way to do that.
I'm sure there's like some type of survey, but I don't actually think it's necessary. I think it's a great thing. I'm just always looking to close the gap.
Sure.
And for the return to be, once it's flush, then it's a brilliant thing for everyone, right?
Yeah. And and then, and then even beyond that, if you, I mean, if you look at cities that, let's, let's just put it this way. Let's just say this city did not have pickleball courts. Let's say it didn't have parks. Let's say it didn't have Bear Meadows and it didn't have a golf course. I'm kind of guessing that the population here wouldn't be real great.
Well, it's not now. We don't have houses.
It'd be even less. It would be less. There's no question. And so, you know, there's give and takes. And I wish I could, I wish I could come up with a dollar amount, how to figure that out. But I can't.
On the lobbying board, one of the best things we ever did, not to interrupt you, Jen, but one of the most successful is pairing the golf course with the racetrack. That was a very, very successful promotion we did during the summer one year.
Right.
It's amazing how people come up here and golf in the morning and go lose all their money in the afternoon.
Lots in Utah.
And then spend the night in a motel because they're too drunk to go home. So works out really well.
And I know from my professional standpoint, we have doctors in this town that we wouldn't have in this town if it wasn't. I see with Horse Palace coming, we voted to support Horse Palace. I really see having Horse Palace, the horse racing, expand that even more. We have Southwest, Southwest Wyoming Off-Road Trails. I see the whole picture coming together that we become a destination.
Very true.
Because some family's going to come, some is going to go play, play over at the Horse Palace while husbands go out and golf or vice versa, or do this and that, or do a combination, take some rides, stay at a hotel. I see, and I know you can't quantify that, I can't quantify, but I'm thinking the number amount of money that gets spent in town, just probably on lunches and gas, not counting anything else, probably more than offsets that. I've, I personally have benefited in my profession in my, before I retired in the past, from what that golf course does. I personally have benefited in my profession, in my, before I retired in the past, from what that golf course does. And so, and I've had, and I'm not sure who wrote that article, I'll take a look, but I've had several big conversations with people about what that brings. And I think it brings things back in that we wouldn't have for people who don't golf if we didn't have it. So that's my personal opinion. I think, I see the whole package coming together. I see the, I see us finally getting all the pieces together, really start to be a true destination place. And I see everybody benefiting. I mean, Horse Palace last week said 400 jobs total by the time you're all done. I mean, you take those pieces, you see golf going to 35, 37 rounds, because you have, you have people coming up to do those other activities, and then you decide to go golf around. I just, I just see it getting bigger and better. And I see, I see maybe the gap in the, reducing on its own with there, but, but I don't really, I personally don't really think there's a gap with what gets spent elsewhere in town.
Thank you.
The gap of that real number is like three-something, but I think we get that back in economic development tenfold, myself. So, thank you for the job you guys do up there.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks.
All right. Chief Renn, does she have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Rocco? Trudy? Damon?
No, sir. Nothing.
All right, public, anybody out there in the audience have anything they want to discuss with us?
I have a question, Scott. Scott? Who wrote that? It was a paper, it was in the Pointe page, right?
Leonard, it's better to the editor.
So he finds that people's own perception and their own view, and it's not a reflection on the paper as a whole. Fox News does it every day. So I think it's important, it's easy to talk to, you can see the flow of it, and maybe make some clarification there, so the fact of the paper was...
I wasn't... You stand? I wasn't attacking you. This was directed at Mr. Slott. What's that, Dr. Rocco?
The whole, the whole article was on the 2 cent, or the .5 cent increase. And the idea that I would have voted no, and I had provided examples. The, for example, the golf fund, I used actually the information that was provided by the council in their budget. In fact, I was kind. The deficit for this next coming year is 483,000 plus. And I used 400,000. The, I was a little off on the, these were examples, and that wasn't just the only example I provided. The whole opinion piece, and it was an opinion piece, mine, was on the idea of asking for individuals to come up with additional tax money when everyone is hurting. Both economically, the idea here is, we also have, when asked by this council to provide a plan of how you're going to utilize that money, the nation wasn't forwarded to you. It's very difficult for us as voters to make assessments on what we think are going to be reasonable things. I believe the fact that economic development is an important part of a city. I also want to have plans on how you're going to use the money. Because, especially in times of stress, especially in times of economic downturn, this is important. And I wish the council would have forced a plan to go forward and go public. That would have helped the voter on that. It appeared like a simple slush fund, and without purpose. So, in order to understand, I listed a number of economic choices that this city made to make an assessment if this is something worthy of my vote. And I provided those examples. And I stand by those examples. Perhaps there are some inaccuracies to the numbers. But to the, to the reason why that opinion was written, to the idea that we ought to be more, we ought to be more concerned about how we spend our tax money. Especially when, for example, and let me discuss the fact that we had extended a blight declaration that actually hurts our community unless we come up with a plan to satisfy and improve our community. The TIF opportunity was the reason why. That would provide us, in this community, in the, in the area of blight, additional financial. We're not asking for free money, we're asking for perhaps loans, grants, anything that helped what we considered a blighted area. But it was declared as too hard. Too hard to get that money. And tax money should be hard, it should be hard to obtain. But in reality here, the, and so that was it. You start looking at economic, you look at the tools that we typically ignored, that we already had at hand, and we look at how we've concurrently spent our money. We had a reasonable, for example, since I'm up here now talking, we had the opportunity. I remember when there was discussion in this council about movement of a tower. I think, in my view, an important aspect of moving that water tower here, I think it has mutual benefit. But there was argument that the cost associated with that move was too loose. There wasn't detail to that cost. And I understand that. I think it's important that you tie up as much cost, because you're using taxpayers' money. But on the other hand, since I've, I came from an area of construction, here we are, having change orders of a significant amount of money for a business, and yet not showing that same hopefulness to the other businesses currently exist. I think that's hard. These change orders suggest two things. One, based on the mayor's own argument, the idea that there needs to, there is a misunderstanding, or there's not a lack of understanding what it takes. So here we are, have change orders of a significant amount of money. Taxpayers' money is doing that. So it tells me that, one, we didn't have an understanding what we were, what we were moving towards when we made this lease. Or we did understand, and we chose to ignore the fact, and we were going to do this by small amounts of change orders, so a public doesn't see it. And I'm hoping, I think we have a talented city heads, directors here. So I actually have faith in them. So what does that say about how many change orders we've had with taxpayers' money? That was just an example, as I provided those other examples. I was a little off on the, a little bit half a million, under half a million. But we did spend, at least, I think, 350,000 or, to something like that. Well, that's fine. But we do have to, we do have to understand that we have an obligation to the taxpayer. We have an obligation to ensure that they know we are spending our money. And it would be nice if we spent our money for everyone. The golf course has a very narrow, and while I know everyone's pleased about that, it still has a narrow purpose. It still doesn't carry a lot of the Evanston population. So just to, it won't go too much more. The idea here is, that was an opinion piece on the idea of asking us to subject ourselves to taxes when we had no plan, we had no purpose for it, when our economic situation is such. That's what that opinion piece was. And then I was also searching out examples of our choices in economic development in the city, because if there wasn't a plan forward, what other data set do I use? Our actions. Simple. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring to the council's attention? All right, your turn.
We're done now. We're done, burnt.
Thank you, Evan.
Good luck, guys.